January 27th. This is our 17th meeting of the fiscal year 2014. I'm Alex Whiteside, the chairman.
Danny Lynch, member.
Emily Gannis, member.
William Clark, planning director.
Gene Peterson, clerk.
Michael Kelly, member.
Ed Dudley, member.
Okay, now we're going to meet again on the second We're going to meet again on the second Thursday of March, are we not?
Yes, and we will have an update from the master plan consultants on that date.
I'm not sure what it is, but
The 13th.
The 13th of March, we're meeting again.
13th?
Yes.
And then we'll meet again two weeks after that, which should be the 27th. Okay. Now we've got
Seventeen?
No.
Two weeks from here's the
The 13th and 14th is 27th.
That's right.
Most of you want to call it 13th.
Thank you.
Now, we've got some minutes. I think we should do the January 25th minute. They're great. But I don't think we should do the February 25th minutes this meeting.
13th, February 13th minutes.
February 13th meeting.
So I'll move the minutes of January 23rd.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. The minutes are approved. We get to the citizen speak portion of the meeting. Citizens are encouraged to speak on matters that are not going to be discussed at the public hearing, but if the matters will be discussed at the zoning public hearing, we don't want people discussing them at citizen speak. So with that caveat, any citizens want to speak? All right. We will pass along to the master plan report.
Excellent. Well, the master plan committee and the planning board are sponsoring our first public forum this Saturday, March 1st. It's being held at Fuller Village at the Brush Hill Road site from 9:00 to 12:00. I have here for each of you an agenda for the meeting, and a lot of the information has been posted on our Tumblr site.
What's a Tumblr site?
It's a type of website. So if people search, I believe if they go to the town's website, on the front page there's a link to Milton Master Plan, the town's website, and then there's a link to the Tumblr site from there. So have a look at the agenda. Both the master plan committee and the planning board have been posted, and I know some of you have said that you'll be there, and I look forward to seeing there, and we've had a lot of interest in this. I should say that there will also be food, childcare for people who have difficulty getting childcare on Saturday mornings, and we have door prizes, including Red Sox tickets, which I expect to be a draw. But it'll, it's going to be a really good session. We're bringing together information from the past phase, the first phase that we did, and new information that the consultants have been working on, and we'll have some interactive exercises to get people moving around and thinking about some of the issues in front of us.
All right. I think that that's an excellent report. Anything of you and selectmen Conlon are looking into town sites for possible use as affordable housing?
We are trying to get our schedules together to do that, so the selectmen's meeting at which
Lucky we didn't put you under a non-negotiable deadline.
Yes, yes, it is, isn't it?
Like we have.
Yes. The selectmen's meeting was delayed by snow, so she wasn't appointed until a little bit later than we'd hoped, and she and I have not been able to get our schedules together. So I don't have a progress report for you as of yet.
All right. The women's club plan, they want to not have a pumping station, but use a gravity flow sewer, which is an excellent, an excellent plan. The design going through on the easement still has to be, has to be put onto the plan and reviewed by the town's engineer, so
Will there be a profile on it?
Will there be a profile on it?
It's in there, yes.
Okay. But just remember, you said that.
I know it's in the plan, yes.
Okay. There's going to be
I saw it in the post.
There's going to be a profile, and have you talked to the fire chief again?
I did, and he's all set with the plans as they are submitted.
And the
There's a fire hydrant outside, there's a fire hydrant in the lane, he's all set.
And the Mary Webster Lane is
He actually prefers the name change. DPW Engineering prefers the name change to Mary Webster Lane versus Center Brook, which everybody figured would confuse the dispatch people on all three public safety departments.
So we've still got, we've still got a little work to do there. It's taking a long time, but we are not ignoring it. We're, we're trying to get the, the plan in proper, proper order. Okay, we've got a A&R plan at 92 Forest Street, which we will consider in the future, and the town planner has exactly three minutes to report.
I know that one of the papers I gave you tonight was the amended submittal for 40B that was that we just received yesterday, the 131 Elliott, the Henry's property. It takes it from 72 units down to 57 units. I really haven't had a whole lot of time to take and review it. I've given you the, the, the plan, the amended plan and the narrative. We are still waiting for full-size plans for the review. The clock started supposedly yesterday, and we're we know that there are some issues with the stuff in the submittal, so we're probably going to have to ask for continuance until we get all of the pieces. I am working with the
And is that plan going to be available for people to see?
As soon as I get one, I can figure out how they're going to do that.
You'll have it at the, in the town planner's office?
Yes.
Okay.
There are, another 40B that we're working to get a comment letter for the site plan eligibility is the 40B off Randolph Ave. It's a 72 unit, 72 units of rental, 33 three bedrooms, nine twos and 27 one bedrooms. Those comments are due March 31st. Department heads have been getting me their comments, and I'll be putting together a draft and working with town council for a final.
So people on the planning board should look at that because at our meeting on the 13th, we're going to have to discuss that because waiting till the 27th is going to be tight.
Where off Randolph Ave is this? Right opposite West Play. It's between
Yeah.
Reedsdale Road. It's, it backs up to the yard. It's halfway between Reed and Reedsdale Road. I think it's five houses after the DPW. There's a gap of trees, which is a paper street that goes into the site. It's an eight-acre site that is, 1.6 acres of it is wet. Wetland in the front. They have to maybe build a bridge? Yes. They're putting in a box culvert to handle the wetland crossing, and then they will do wetland replication to the right as you go in.
That's the proposal.
As proposed.
As proposed, right.
I've been working on the Governor Stoughton property. I've met with Pulte a few times to go over what their hope is for a submittal, how that submittal will work with the cluster bylaw that is being proposed, the citing issues of the property itself, dealing with wetland issues, dealing with the access issues coming in from Unquity Road, and some of the ledge issues so they can do their geotech borings. Been dealing with the, the rink on the long-term lease and the annual report to DCR, the paperwork that is before you, that all of these comment letters for the Thayer project or the Thayer proposal.
For the Thayer zoning.
Yeah, please. And then the master plan review of the documents coming in and out.
All right.
I think that's enough.
Perfect. Thanks.
There's more, but
There's more?
No, you don't need more.
We can do that at the end of the meeting.
Just a little longer, can you I understand you're going to be getting an assistant?
Yep. If town meeting votes it, yes. It would be, it would be for an assistant planner, and it would be sometime after July 1st.
Full-time?
Wait that long? Can you
Full-time or part-time?
Depends what the money is after the job description gets put out. I'm thinking that it's probably full-time. Hoping it's full-time.
All right, well, we are too, so
Do you need any help?
Well
Also doing the animal shelter, so if you're in a buttock to the animal shelter, you're the sighting off of the access road, you'd be getting a letter within the next week we can
Well, I'm not, so I won't, but
But you know that it's coming, so, okay.
All right. It's now 6:45. We're going to continue our hearing on the annual town meeting zoning articles, and the, we've got a number of, a number of articles that we're considering, and what we're considering them for is that the articles have been submitted to the selectmen for inclusion on the May warrant for action by the town meeting. The town meeting will decide what to do with the, with the articles once they, once they get there. But before they get there, there are a number of steps that have to be taken, and one of them is that the planning board has to hold a hearing on the various articles, and it has to, at the time of town meeting, submit a recommendation to the town meeting as to what the planning board, what action the planning board recommends that the town meeting take on the action. So whatever the planning board's decision on a recommendation is, is just a recommendation to the town meeting, and the town meeting has the opportunity to accept it, change it, deny it, ignore it, embrace it, whatever they want to do. The town meeting is the legislature, and it is their call. The warrant committee is always interested in what the planning board has to say about zoning articles because the planning board deals in zoning, and we try to get a recommendation to the warrant committee as soon as we possibly can so that they have a chance to have our input when they form their own recommendation. And their recommendation becomes the article that is in fact considered. So they can take an article that's submitted, and they can say, well, this article really should be changed in various ways. They will set out what those changes are and say, we recommend the article as so amended. Or they can say, we, we think the article is perfect as written, and, or they can say, we think the article is unsatisfactory and should be rejected out of hand. That's the warrant committee. The warrant committee is looking forward to getting our input, and we're going to do our best to get input as soon as possible. Now
Chairman?
Yes.
Could I announce to the audience, if there are more chairs in the next room, you can bring them over if you want.
All right, and there are these chairs which you can, you can put along the walls, and leave those three chairs down there, but take that one out, Jean, if you would. And that, that should be good.
Will you get, go
Mike.
Thank you.
I used to work with a guy called me John. I gave up after a while.
John?
And I used to talk to people, they'd call me John.
All right. Who is here to make comments about the cluster development article? This is an article that would enhance the cluster development bylaw so as to encourage developers to cluster, which means to put houses on smaller lots than usual so that open space around them can be preserved. Yes?
I just want to clarify, because you jumped into that. Are you running through the articles as you did at our last meeting to see who wants to, to talk to them?
I was, I'm going to do them one by one. And I'm going to, you don't see how many people
The way we did at our last meeting?
We have.
Just to clarify for people who weren't here last time.
We have, yes. I mean, I'm hoping that we can put Thayer on soon, but after the other ones. That's what I hope. So the cluster by
Do you want to take in an honor of where they posted?
We can do that. Does anyone want to talk about the zoning bylaw reformatting, which simply reformats the zoning bylaw with making no, no change? I don't, didn't think so. Cluster development. As I say, it, it enhances the cluster bylaw, and it would have possible effect on a number of, of projects in town. Milton Muse, the St. Pius property, the Fandry Estate property, the, the Walcut property just immediately come to mind. It would make, it would give the developer a small bonus in lots to do a cluster development, but it provides much more flexibility than the conventional zoning, and it provides dedicated open space, and all in all, it's a great, a great bylaw. So, anyone? Medical marijuana, citing of the facility. We had a question about whether or not we should have
A limitation.
A limitation of space, and you'll look into that.
I will look into that.
Which, which means you just can't put two right next to each other. But it's pretty straightforward. All right. And the medical marijuana moratorium is just a, a, in case the citing proposal goes down in flames, this would provide a further moratorium so that we can go back to the drawing board. Agricultural, attached condominium residence development is an article that I've talked to the proponents, and they agree that if the planning board were to, I believe they agree, that if the planning board were to recommend that the article be recommit, be committed to the planning board for study, for, to be brought back in October, that this seemed like a reasonable procedure. And the article to amend the financial penalty for zoning violations would provide that if you have a zoning violation and it continues for more than two weeks, at the end of that two-week period, it would become a new zoning violation. This is an article intended to, to make people who violate the zoning cure their violations promptly, and it's, it's, it's reasonable in the view of the planning board. Okay. I don't see anyone who wants to testify on any of those articles, and we will deal with them at our next meeting. As far as formulating our recommendation so that the warrant committee can know what it is. Now we'll get to the agricultural nursery landscaping development article, sometimes known as the Thayer Nursery article, and as I say, we're, we're trying to formulate a recommendation, and there are views that are very widely different from each other. I think some, we've had a lot of comments that this is a commercial operation, a residential zone, commercial operations aren't allowed, it should be not allowed. We've had people who say that the, this is a commercial operation, but it's been carried on for many years, and that to pull the rug out from under the people who've been conducting it would not be fair. And as I mentioned at the last meeting, between these two poles, let the operation continue, stop the operation, there is a lot of middle, which is let an operation continue, but circumstride the, try to identify the problems and deal with them. And obviously, if there were to be a middle ground, it would be, it might not be satisfactory to everyone, but it would probably be it probably would be it wouldn't be unsatisfactory to one side and then totally satisfactory to the other. Everyone might grouse a bit, but it, it might be the way to go. And for that reason, the planning board has been receiving comments about particular issues and is interested in whether or not these issues can be addressed effectively. So with that said, Mr. Corcoran, you represent the Thayer Nursery, and why don't you bring us up to date as to what's been happening?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Joined by Josh Oldfield, who is one of the Thayer Nursery Oldfields, and family that owns the property in question. For the record, my name's Ned Corcoran, I am an attorney, resident of Milton, attorney based in Quincy, representing Thayer Nursery. I've done a couple of things today, forwarded to the board a proposed red line of the citizens' petition with some proposed amendments that I think softens the proposal, adjusts hours of operation, will remove operations for any landscaping on Sunday, and I've got copies of it. And we've done, I think, two weeks ago, we showed a draft of a site plan. We've made some further modifications to that site plan, and I have copies of that. and I, this will work if I press the right button?
Yeah, absolutely. Let me scoot down so you have some room.
Okay, just tell me. On the lights in back there. Maybe in front.
Do it. Right there. Want them back and stay on? They're going to be smooching back with the door.
So, just to refresh, the, this is the neighborhood at sort of 10,000 feet. This is Randolph Avenue, running north and south, Route 28. This is Hillside Street, running northeasterly, southwesterly. This is Harland Street, Forest Street, and Parkwood Drive. The main portion of the property that Thayer Nursery owns is here. Secondary portion of the property is over here. Next. This is a close-up of the, closer up of the main property at 270 Hillside Street, and as I think I said last time, there are a couple of, as I've come to understand it since I've sort of joined into this process, there are a number of issues that have been particularly affecting neighbors and direct buttocks for some time, largely associated, I think, with operations that take place here. This is a very dense, hard-packed surface that, of stone that turns to dust. It, there's a barn with tall sides, and I think serves as a bit of an echo chamber. Noises, they're not muffled, in fact, they're, they're made worse by that, and the storage of materials, and particularly mulch, that's a mulch pile that existed last August, creates odor and other issues, and most of the landscaping operations have occurred right here. Next. This is the property across the street. There's a composting pile in here with the Thayer is licensed to receive in here.
Where's Hillside Street?
Hillside, I'm sorry, Hillside Street now is down
Right here.
Here, and Harland would be over here. Next. And this is the, another look at the, the area in question, and primarily, the proposal is to completely change the location of operations from this area to this area, and to have all, both of these sides of the property substantially buffered with plantings and other treatments. Next. So, this is the modification, not, this was the, the site plan that we showed two weeks ago. We showed 20-foot planted berm and tree buffer here with 65-foot of planted berm, buffer, not berm, here with some other infill, with some new material bins here and here. We've modified that slightly, and the next site plan is the one that I handed out this evening. Go, next. And that is that we've expanded the planted area here, so rather than 20 feet along this side, we come out to about 45 feet along here. The plan shows a drive aisle that, with arrows going this way, and the purpose of that is to ensure that all major vehicle movements happen in a forward process, that this, that limit the, the amount of backing that would go on so that reduce the, the number of times that the backup beepers would be going off from trucks. And then we've beefed up further some of the plantings that would be in along here to further muffle any noise that might escape. And then we're showing vehicles sort of parked here and here. The notion would be that, at the end of the day, we've adjusted hours of operation. You can see from the proposal, on the red line from that, at 6:00 in the evening, Monday through, through Saturday, landscaping operations would cease, and that would simply say that trucks come back bef, after 6:00, or by 6, aren't back by 6:00, they simply park, and that's it. There's no cleaning, there's no emptying, there's no other thing, so that those types of operations would cease. There would be, we're proposing now that there would be no landscaping operations at all on Sunday, that Sunday would become a quiet day. And so, there's that, the, next is the modification to the site plan across the street. This is being Hillside and Harland. We're showing an infill of, of white pines and, and plantings along We're showing an infill of white pines and plantings along the northerly and westerly boundary lines, and a berm with, a raised berm along this property line with shrubs. You can't plant trees along here because the septic system for these houses drains, comes into here, and so roots could be, could damage. But if we raise a berm and use green shrubs, it'll provide a similar screening along that side. And so those are the, those are the modifications. I'll highlight, again, the red line that we are proposing to reduce hours of operations, eliminating operations on Sundays with respect to the landscaping component. We've increased the minimum setback for, well, we've identified a minimum setback for buildings on the property, which would be 35 feet. The barn, if you go back one bill, this barn is 37, existing is 37 feet off of that property line. We're saying that there would be that, a minimum of 35-foot setback there, allowing for the drive aisle to come through, either to get around the building or to come into the barn from the back of the building in order for vehicles to be stored. We would store as much as possible, vehicles would be stored inside Bobcats, equipment, materials would be stored inside the barn, would be cleaned inside the barn as much as possible, so that the noise associated with those operations would take, would be further muffled by the fact that they would be conducted inside. We add a provision that, specific provision that mulch and other materials would be stored in concrete bins, again, to be located along here and here, and that those bins contain covers. They would be mesh-type covers, but would reduce the, reduce any dust or odor that would be emanating from them. And because of mulch in particular as a biodegradable substance, it needs to be able to aerate. But if it's, if it's covered, that would, that would reduce the impact of the, any emanation of odor. That all areas of, parking areas where they're currently a hardscape, those areas would be softened, and that would be further effort to reduce noise and also to eliminate dust. And that along the edges of buildings, and along the edges of the bins, we'd plant arborvitae and similar treatments to further muffle the noise, so that if there is some noise, it would be captured and by the arborvitae, as opposed to bouncing off of a solid wooden wall and acting in the form of an echo chamber. We say that cleaning and maintenance of vehicles will happen only Monday through Saturday, and only between the hours of 9:00 and 5:00, so during the day. Truck deliveries to the property need to be rescheduled as much as possible on weekdays to occur between 8:00 and 3:00, to eliminate the parking, the four hours of trucks. This is obviously an issue with some of their deliveries, this area, because of Milton's proximity to major highways and high-dense highway, high-density highways, I-93 in particular being just to the south of this area. The notion is that many of the trucks like to get in and out before the traffic hits in the morning. We'd like to encourage them to wait until after the traffic has dissipated and then come and make your delivery, so we would suggest that, as part of the bylaw, that those types of deliveries should occur after 8:00 in the morning. If it's after 8:00, then it's likely to be after 10:00. And so those are, that's a highlight of the changes that we're proposing. I'm happy to take more specific questions. But I would, I would just say that, you know, we listen very carefully to issues and concerns that have been, been raised, that were raised two weeks ago, they've been raised more broadly, they've certainly been raised loudly and clearly by neighbors who have been directly affected by the, the way in which this property has been operated for some period of time. It is clear to me that the concerns that have been raised are legitimate, they ought not to be taken lightly, and they need to, need to be responded to in a very careful and measured approach. I think that what is being proposed here, I think the changes that we've worked on very carefully, and any other changes that might further be proposed, that we'd be happy to listen to, I think should go a long way towards mitigating the types of concerns that we've heard, and I would encourage the board, and I would encourage the town, to think carefully about approving a bylaw in substantially this form, recognizing, I think, the historic significance of this property and the history of the town. It is a significant, has a significant historic position in this town, and I think it would be, it would be unfortunate if that, if that history were overturned going forward. So with that, I'll leave it, I'll open it to questions and other comments that may arise. Thank you.
Mr. Corcoran? I, well, we'll get to general comments. I have a, I've been thinking about this, and I made a list of, a list of matters which interested me, and if I can find it, I will run through it.
How high is the berm, the new berm?
The new berm, it will be up to four feet. It'll be sort of as if, but in the area of the operation, it'll be at four feet with white pine plantings that'll start at the height of about 10 to 12 feet, so you effectively would have a fairly significant 16-plus or minus foot wall that would grow over time.
But the berm would decrease as the grade increased, so closer to Forest, just from an aesthetics standpoint.
It runs downhill to Forest Street or uphill?
Runs downhill from Forest.
From Forest.
So what, what, what I came up with was an elevation of the berm height ranging from two to four, just for the aesthetics of the berm, so you don't have an for grading purposes.
Is there a, is there a berm, now that's the, I guess that would be the south side, is the east side, is there a berm up there as well?
There is not a berm there. There is a berm there.
Well, I'm saying a new berm. Is there a berm to be installed there?
We didn't propose that because of existing deciduous vegetation, and if one were to berm...
You'd destroy it.
Correct.
But we do, we, because, because of the distance, you know, the 65 feet, we're saying simply between the edge of that, of those properties, and the, and this point, it tapers a little bit as you come here, but it's a fairly wide swath of permanent plantings, and then with additional plantings in here that would be sort of nursery stock that might change out periodically, but you have a fairly significant depth there. This is a narrower area, the operation is closer to the Lapore property, so berming that up, we thought was more important, but obviously if there's some thought about that would...
The grade change behind the double greenhouse that you see there, right in that area there, Ned, to the property line, is approximately six to seven feet, and at the top of that berm, we have about 15-foot hemlocks pre-existing.
Looking at the berm, the neighbors, what are they going to be looking at? I mean, is there going to be any ground cover, or is it just going to be a mound of dirt?
It would be a mulch planting bed with a mix of, obviously, white pines for screening purposes, and then it would be infilled with other vegetation, so the aesthetics would be pleasing. We have a woman here, Heidi, who could, at some point, or maybe she, that's up to Ned when we want to bring Heidi in for that.
The hope of the berm is sound, or?
It's a combination of aesthetics and sound. The white pine, because they grow fairly quickly and fairly tall, and they're year-round...
Are they dense?
They're fairly...
They're running to the ground, Ned, you know, like...
They're low to the ground, and they remain low to the ground, although, when they grow, and they, and they infill fairly densely, is that they act as a pretty good noise buffer. So aesthetically, it's a year-round green, because it's evergreen and not deciduous. Right now, there's a fairly significant deciduous wooded area in here, but I think the canopy's pretty tall, and so this, you can see through, particularly now, obviously, without any leaves on the trees, but this would be a year-round vertical screen that would act as both a noise muffler and a visual screen.
Mr. Chairman? Any water coming off the berm? How would that be controlled?
It would flow downhill towards that corner, and there's an actual drain down in that general area right there, pre-existing.
Why don't you move those two microphones a little closer to yourselves?
And let me introduce Heidi Coast, who is a landscape architect who's working with us on the design features associated with this.
And another reason why we selected white pines, it's a native plant, and we try to use natives as much as possible.
Native, it's resistant to deer, it's fast-growing, so, you know, grows at three or four feet a year when planted, so I think, you know, that's, again, it's a, something will grow and it will, it will, it will thrive here, it won't struggle.
Will there be a fence in the berm, like to keep them?
There is no fence proposed.
No, just, just tell them that, I'll...
Yeah, nothing proposed, obviously, that's something that people would like to consider. We'd take a look at that.
Yeah, I would like to ask a question, Mr. Chairman. What are the arguments for and against the fence, Ned?
Well, first of all, the lot next to the proposed berm is empty, and it's heavily wooded, so there is nothing on it except a barn. The fence is not, would not act as a privacy fence, however, it could act as a deer fence, and a deer fence is all around the property anyway, at least, not all of them, but on the, on the hillside area and in the back to the coal.
Behind the coal property...
Right.
To the back left corner of the greenhouse.
Right, and further back there, right.
And then across...
Right.
Towards Hillside Street.
What if the neighbors wanted a, a privacy fence, the budding neighbors, one might want one, one might not want one?
That's a question.
That's a, that's a question we'd be happy to consider.
All right, Ed, Mr. Chairman, to the right of the structure, to the, to the right of the Thayer property, I see a structure. Is that a dwelling?
This is a dwelling.
Oh, to the right, Ned, I'm sorry.
This is a...
Keep going, keep...
That is a barn, no.
That's a barn.
Mrs. Lapore lives, there's a property line, I think it's here, and her, her house is somewhere in this area.
So what am I, what am I looking at there?
Barn. What's that?
Is that a barn?
I think that's a barn.
It is a barn, and her property line runs very close to that barn, towards Parkwood Drive.
She owns a very, I think she's got four or five acres that sort of mirror about the same size as this lot. It's two lots, one lot contains the barn, and then the second is what contains the residence.
Is it her barn?
It's her barn.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Now, the way this zoning is set up is that what it provides for is it provides a procedure by which an applicant, which would be the Thayer Nursery, would ask the planning board for a special permit to authorize a landscaping operation on the property. And the zoning that we're considering sets the parameters, would set the parameters for that special permit. In other words, the special permit establishes certain standards. If you want to get a special permit, you have to do this, 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 this. And the planning board, the more specificity in the zoning, the better the planning board likes it. We don't want this zoning, just to dump the matter in our laps in the future with no direction, assuming that happens. I mean, if the town meeting were to pass zoning, we'd want the town meeting to be quite specific as to what they think is reasonable, because if it comes to us without standards, we're going to have a meeting like this, and we will be the final arbiters, and we, you know, we're just, we're, we, we need direction. And that's what the zoning, if the zoning, if we were to recommend zoning, we would want it to be very specific as to what is permitted, and I've made a few notes. We'd want to know about the hours, and we'd want to know about the activities. I mean, here we have a nursery operation, a landscaping operation, we have a wood operation, and we have a retail operation, and often they, they sort of merge. They're not distinct, they're, they're not distinct, so when you, you say you're, you're running your landscaping operation, you say, no, 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 that's our nursery operation. We want to be, we would like the zoning to make it very clear what the landscaping operation that's being permitted actually is, so that there is, can be no confusion as to what's a nursery operation, what's a landscaping operation. The wood operation, is that still the kiln-dried firewood, is that a, I mean, that is really a separate operation, and a fairly substantial one. So we would want, if that's going to be part of the zoning, we would want that operation to be described in detail as to what is permitted. That's the, so, so we would want, want that, and then we would, we would like to have this enforceable. Obviously, the building inspector is the first line of enforcement, but there should be a review of this special permit, and it seems to me that if the special permit were reviewable every five years to ensure that it's working the way it's supposed to, that that would keep everyone's feet to the fire. Noise, we've, reducing noise is very important, reducing dust, airborne debris, very important. The expansion of the operation, what should be, what if anything should be permitted? Are new buildings to be permitted, are more trucks to be permitted? I assume that the operation would like to expand, and there needs to be, it needs, the, the question of expansion needs to be addressed. It just can't be left unaddressed. The design and number of buildings, seems to me that the design of, of commercial buildings in the residential zone is a matter of, like all the other special permits, that design standards for the buildings could be productively used. The setbacks, the buffers... standards for the buildings could be productively used. The setbacks, the buffers, parking. Here you have a, it's basically an outdoor operation. And so basing your parking on the amount of retail space is probably not the right thing. I mean, presumably, the people who drive the trucks drive their cars or take the bus. But some of them must drive their cars to park at the nursery and then drive the trucks and then bring the trucks, dump their cars, go home. So parking needs to be, needs to be looked at. The surfaces, how you're going to make the surfaces dust-free without creating asphalt, some ideas along that. As I say, the specifics of the firewood business, if you want to continue the firewood business, which would seem to be a business that could be relocated, but then we need, we need to know what, what we're dealing with. The dumpsters, the emptying of dumpsters, the placement of dumpsters needs to be addressed. And then finally, as I say, there should be, once a special permit is issued, it should be reviewable because one of the problems that, I've, I've read all the decisions and one of the problems seems to be that activities just creep. And if they're reviewed periodically, that will go a long way to keep that from happening. So those are some ideas. You've made progress. I, I think that there's more progress that can be made, yes.
Alex, I'd add to your list, lighting. I think you mentioned hours of operation, but also hours for delivery time. And ensuring that when, so for example, say you start the deliveries at eight o'clock, ensuring that trucks that are arriving prior to eight o'clock are not sitting outside of local residences, running their motors, waiting to come in to eight o'clock. So some provision needs to be made if a truck driver decides to come earlier. You address lighting overspill in the zoning, it would need to be a little bit tighter. And hours of operation, you have changed some of them to avoid having certain activities have on Sundays. I think those could be a little bit, I know those could be a little bit tighter, both for delivery time, deliveries being prohibited on Sundays completely. And although I know the Christmas season, holiday season is critical for many businesses, especially those selling Christmas trees and wreaths, nine o'clock on a Sunday seems to be a little late, even during that season. So I would add those as elements to be considered to your list.
Mr. Chairman.
You mentioned expansion, and I'm just wondering, are the, I think there's two lots you use down, down further on Hillside.
Up and down. Yeah, there's another lot, I think it's on the.
My question, are those under consideration tonight?
This is part of their operation, yeah.
It is, isn't it?
It's all part of the landscaping operation.
Be clear, there's just one lot out there more than that.
Well, it's, it's, what you see is what you've got.
One more parcel?
It's 3.86 acres.
I understand.
Just the second piece is almost four acres?
Yes.
So it's two parcels we want to consider.
All right. Now, as I say.
May I, may I just ask a question? I think your, I think all of your comments are appropriate and I'm glad to have that, the feedback and we'll work on further modifications. In terms of the review, I'm assuming that the, the planning board is the special permit granting authority in this case. The planning board would be the reviewing body as well?
That's what I would assume.
Yeah, I would assume.
But I do think that that would be an important part of a, of a procedure that might work. And, and let me just say now that if we design what we think is the best procedure with as good standards as can be done, then, once we've done that, we'll determine whether or not we think it's adequate. In other words, the board in designing this is simply formulating something that the board will then determine whether it's, it's crossed the goal line in its opinion. In other words, by designing, by talking about all these things, it doesn't mean that we necessarily are saying that this is what we're going to do. We're going to eventually, when we have something that's as, as good as we can get, the board will then determine whether they recommend what's as good as we can get or to something else.
Absolutely. And to your point, Alex, earlier in this meeting, this is a citizens petition in front of town meeting. It's an article on the warrant in front of town meeting. Although the planning board will make some form of recommendation, which can come in a number of forms to town meeting, the warrant committee will have its own recommendation, which may or may not match that of the planning board. Town meeting does, as Alex said earlier, make the final decision. And one of our responsibilities as a board, when looking at citizens petitions, is if town meeting were to vote for the petition as written, how would we, the planning board, feel about the strength of that zoning? So while we may make recommendations to strengthen the zoning, that does not necessarily mean that we will also make a recommendation to vote for the zoning. We could make recommendations and also recommend that they vote against the zoning. We have about five different options that we can present to town meeting.
All right. I just want to kind of emphasize some of the points you made, and that is the number of vehicles and the point you made about the expansion of the business. I mean, that in itself seems to be the problem. So at some point, and any business wants to expand and grow, and that's great, but this, this piece of land can only accommodate so much and still be maintained in a residential area. So I think more specifically, you'd have to name the number of vehicles total relative to all businesses, whether it's the nursery, the wood, selling it, or the landscaping. You'd have to say total number of vehicles, period, accumulated through all businesses will be X. The same with the buildings. I think you'd have to say, you know, will max out at so many square feet if it's what exists today or if you want to try to project something else.
Yeah, I think that's a realistic approach because it's such crossover, like we're talking about certain, if someone wants a quantity X.
Correct.
It gets truck X.
You can't say five vehicles for the landscape.
Correct.
Because like Alex said earlier.
Then we'll need 20 vehicles.
Is that any tree for the nursery business? But I mean, it's just, it seems to be, the inherent problem here is if there's any significant more expansion, it's going to just emphasize the problem. So it seems like you're almost at the point where you may be able to accommodate what exists today, but to expand any further would be, I mean, it would take an off-site facility, I guess, to make more expansion happen for the business. But that's, that's beyond me.
Well, the, the idea of the expansion of the business also goes to the question that Ed had earlier about which parcels are being used is do we need to consider the business expanding not just by adding trucks or adding facilities, but also by adding contiguous or non-contiguous land to that? And does this zoning address that either by allowing it or by prohibiting it? So that's something else we should consider.
All right. With those few preliminaries, why don't we see what people, what people are thinking?
Can I ask one more question?
No.
Ned, I have a question. So presently, just, there's no wood operation or landscape business operating on this property presently?
Yes, moment.
No, the wood, the landscaping operation has been ordered to cease and desist. And so vehicles that are dedicated specifically to the landscaping business have been relocated and they will not be operating landscaping and landscaping construction type business this calendar year. The hope is that we'll be back in business a year from now, like that would.
Through, through the article and?
Through the article and a special permit that would be, and then, and then obviously a certificate of occupancy where the building commission has determined that all of the required modifications to the, to the operation, to the property have been installed properly. So in terms of the wood, they are allowed to sell wood, as I understand it, but they're not allowed to deliver wood.
Wood that's relative to the, to the nursery business? In other words, I can get down and grab a.
You can, you can get down and pick up wood.
On February 11th.
I've read all the decisions. I want to know if the, I guess where I'm going with this is how, have all the decisions been complied with? I seen it in one order here by the court. The court ordered the building commissioner to initiate fines. Were fines ever initiated?
I don't know. I'm not involved at all in the, in the litigation aspects of this matter.
What about the appeal from the 2002 decision?
I think that's, that's in limbo. I'm not sure what's happened.
Limbo?
It hasn't been, that I know of.
Is that the thing that's lost?
That I know of, it's, it's in the courts.
They've lost, they've lost the papers.
But back to the truck situation again. If neighbors take photos of vehicles because of certain trucks during certain tasks during certain days, there may be a photo taken on one day and a different photo taken the next day.
There may be.
There may be. And so we're not here to debate.
Right, exactly.
We're not here to debate.
Enforcement is just.
Enforcement, the history, it's all matter of public record. It's all been played out before various boards and the court. The purpose here is to see whether town meeting will vote to authorize the reintroduction of the businesses that have been banned under special, certain conditions and very tightly controlled parameters that have not existed in the past and which the Oldfield family is, is ready, willing, and able to enter into and to abide by. And so that's the, the purpose, is to see if we can craft the mechanism by which those businesses can go forward.
With all due respect to what you're saying, and I understand that, the fact, whether or not the property owners complied with court-ordered decisions is kind of an example of what a person could expect in the future, one might think. So with that, I, I still have the question of, you know, whether, whether penalties were assessed and.
In your reading, where would the penalties have been applied?
The, the court ordered Commissioner Prondak to initiate fines of $300 a day.
The court or the?
For, for what?
That's a, I think that is a request by a party. That's a.
That may be, that may be a pleading.
That was a pleading. That's not a court.
Okay, that, that's just their complaint. So in any event.
The Honorable Court shall grant the abutters defendants motion for preliminary injunction, issue an order and compel Commissioner Prondak to immediately inspect the subject property in the presence of the abuter and impose a fine of $300. Who is the Honorable Court here?
Both at the beginning of that, and I think you'll see that it is their complaint.
Respectfully submitted by.
It doesn't say on the, that's the beginning.
But the, the last signature on the page.
All right, well, that, that explains.
No, no, well, I'm.
Like, the last signature on that page is by, is the attorney on behalf of the parties. He's seeking that relief from the court. That is a request of the court.
That's his demand.
Not an order of the court. Court has not issued an order.
This is the.
Okay, that's his, his request of the court.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is, that's the title.
No, I know, I now understand.
Okay. Now.
I understand, I understand.
What do you request of the court do?
Okay, I understand.
Okay. Now we're going to.
Now we have lawyers.
Comments from people to, to see if they can advance the process.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
My name is Steve Shay and I live at.
Oh, you're going to have to sit at the table. Heidi, I think that you're going to have to be subject to recall. And Josh, you will be subject to recall also. And Ned, you can stick around.
My name is Dave Shay and I live at 307 Highland Street. I think you're right, Alex. I think the truth is in the middle. I, there was an article I saw on Facebook about millionaires. They're buying a lot of real estate. I deal with a lot of mom-and-pop businesses like the Oldfields. My God, they're under siege. They're going to be extinct if we don't stop fighting for it. When I think of Bob and Marge Oldfield and what they've given to the town, one can look at St. Elizabeth and that ramp for disabilities because of their daughter Amy. They gave to this town. The Oldfields have given so much to this town. Bob went on the school committee to fight for kids who are underprivileged and he continued to give back. This business has been in existence for 50 years with respect to the neighbors. You knew it when you moved in. There is things that can be done to curb it, to make it more livable, but you don't wipe it off the town of Milton. This is a symbol of pride for people in Milton. Thayer symbolizes the best that Milton has to offer. And some businesses just sell and do stuff. They volunteer. They give back to the community. And we should be encouraging it. This was a well-known business for 50 years. And I think there's stuff that can be done to alleviate the concerns, but not wipe it off the planet. These are good people. You know, you think of, Emily and I went to school with Amy Oldfield. We all know Amy. She inspired us. These people are wonderful, hard-working people. I speak to people like this around the country. This is a tough economy. They're struggling, but they're good people and they're giving back. If there's issue about the hours, put the restrictions on it. Emily made a great point about the lights. Put the restrictions on it or put comment about how many parking. There's stuff that you can do without eliminating the business and about eliminating people who have given more to this town than probably anyone else and they deserve better than what they've gotten.
Not the Copland's.
Not the Copland's. Well, I disagree with you because I adore your father and I, but I just think there's something that can be done about this and we should do it. And no one's saying the Oldfields should get what they want. Alex, you said it right. That ain't the process. But you don't, this family deserves better than that. I urge you to continue deliberations. Great points were made, but you don't wipe out this business. It's wrong. It's un-American. You know, what's the American dream today? Raise your family, have a quality of life, give back to your communities. The Oldfields do it every day. So I urge you to find that middle ground, keep the American way. It's about the American dream. The American dream's under attack. You can stick up for the American dream. Support the article. Support the nursery.
All right. Marvin, do you want to be heard? As an elder statesman, you get a, well, feeling very elder, elder when it comes to the items on the agenda tonight. And I'm going to, I more or less just echo what the previous speaker said because I urge, vigorously urge, the planning board to present an article, zoning article favorably to the warrant committee and the town meeting. From a historical perspective, I'll, I'll just, you're, you're dealing with the zoning, but if you get under the surface, we can't get away from the fact that we're talking about a family that has been a very important family in this town for a long time. My, I feel elderly because before, and nobody here can probably say this, before Pearl Harbor Day, I attended their grandmother's nursery school on Pleasant Street from the time I was three years old until the time I entered kindergarten at the Collycott School. And that gave me a very good head start on a lot of things I've, have accomplished in my life and in this, in this town. And I'll, I'll jump forward 30 or 40 years and I'll say that I was in the, I was the vice president on the executive committee of the Milton Bank and Trust, which has now gone through several mutations, if you will, and is, is now after several transformations is what is now citizens, part of Citizens Bank. And was there when Bob Oldfield, their father, to us with a loan proposal because he was buying or starting this, this, this operation on Hillside Street. And we can't, we should not by any means flush the history down the drain just because there've been neighbor, some neighborhood problems. problems. Some of the, and the neighborhood I recognize is very divided on this issue. But when he came for that original loan proposal and the town gave him the permission to go into the nursery business and the landscaping business way, way back, and this was in the 1960s, way, way back, it was warmly accepted by the neighborhood when most of these, a lot of these homes were not, had never been built. So they've come in after this operation was already there. I can remember just when I first, after spending two years learning the banking business in New York City, when I came back to Milton, I never gave up my voting rights in Milton, by the way, but when I came back to Milton at that time, the, I, the, what, I guess it's, what's the name of the street that's parallel to Forest that where the neighbors are back up?
Parkwood Drive.
Parkwood Drive. That was owned by the Burnett, by the Burnett family, which I knew them pretty well. That was Burnett Woolens, which is the knitting, the kings of the world, so to speak. I knew them pretty well. I can remember having dinner there in what's now the manor house there, so to speak, with my father because one of the Burnett's, like my father was, was a homing pigeon racer. It's a hobby. And they loved their neighborhood, and they loved the Oldfield operation next door. So that's the history. We did it. You have the precedent of doing this for the Coulters. And in terms of what this family has done for the town, especially by, I served on the Milton School Committee with Bob Oldfield, as well as knowing him from a lot of other, and a lot of other... A lot of other contexts, so to speak. And he was certainly on Milton School, on the Milton School Committee. It's no question that a lot of times he was very controversial, but he had always told you exactly what he thought, and he never, and there were no curves. You always, there was no hidden agendas. Their family deserves, for the history of that family in this town, they deserve the consideration of this planning board, and they absolutely deserve to be, get this. I would hope that they vote to approve a zoning change with the restrictions that would hopefully calm down some of this neighborhood furor. The vote to approve this in the Milton Town Meeting, I would really hope, and I'll be disappointed if it comes out otherwise, I would really hope that this will be overwhelmingly approved. That's all I have to say about it.
Thank you.
I'm Dr. Martin Dunn. I live with my wife at 50 Briarbrook Street. We, Briarbrook Street, we live on the corner lots of the, run Parkwood Drive, Briarbrook, and Barberry. My wife and I built our home 44 years ago. We've been in it since. We, the Oldfield family, I just want to recommend have, and I've seen this, have been very fair in the neighborhood for 44 years that we have been there. We've done business with them. One of my daughters grew up with the Oldfield children. And several years ago, we were doing extensive changing on our landscaping, which involved removing a pool. And I had contacted a friend of mine north of Boston concerning what we needed to do, and he felt that that was too far away. And he said, if you can get Heidi Cosse, he said, get her. She's an absolute genius to come in and design it. She has a background in landscaping. She also has a background in engineering, and she's affiliated, I know, with Harvard. And she's from Wellesley, and she has served on all of these committees that we talk about in Milton in Wellesley. So I'm testifying just as, I think we can reach a compromise because there are, there are well-known people here who will do that. And I would certainly recommend that this motion before the planning, before the town committee, the town be approved. But I am just speaking, endorsing these people as both the Oldfields and Heidi Cosse as reasonable people. And so I'd like to see us come to the middle of the road.
I'm Bridget Walden, 94, Parkwood Drive. Thank you, welcome. I hope I can read a letter, and I have a visual aid for you. I can't speak to the problems, the noise, the odor, the dust. I can't speak to that because I live further down Parkwood. But their nursery has meant a lot to my family, so I wrote you a letter. Dear gentlemen and ladies of the planning board, it would be a tremendous loss to, if you could share this with the gentleman down there, to both our neighborhood and our town if their nursery can't remain at its present location. My family has been proud to be their neighbors for over 40 years. We have seen their family tend and grow their nursery and landscaping business. We've seen how Maggie and Josh learned the business by working with their father and also by pursuing educations that complement their work. And we're long-term customers of their nursery. We often go there to purchase wood, loam, plants, plant care products, bird feeders, bird seed. We live next to a property that in the past has been landscaped by their nursery's landscaping business, and I'm really glad to say those crews are professional and courteous. And soon, we're going to need Josh's special expertise to reclaim and renew our own wooded yard. So one summer day, the reason I gave you these visual aids is one summer day, I wandered around their gardens and their greenhouses and their outbuildings for hours, practicing using a camera. And they invite people to come enjoy their gardens. I wanted you to see some of the beauty, because we're talking about flat words, dust, odor, lighting. There's a lot of beauty there in the summer that we can't see right now because it's winter. And other times, I go there and just meander and look for ideas and inspirations. My husband and my son hike through there when they're going on hikes. You can see that our family enjoys, and we need their nursery. And I'm asking you to please help Maggie and Josh define and achieve the changes that they need for their nursery to remain here. Maggie and Josh are motivated, and they're prepared to solve problems, and our family's here to help them any way they can. So please recommend that we make changes for them.
These are great pictures.
Thank you.
These are great pictures.
There's a lot of beauty there.
Guess they're now the planning board's pictures. Are they the planning board's pictures?
Yes, sir.
Oh, well, thanks.
If you care, will you recycle them?
I think that we'll find a home for them. Yes, yes, sir.
Hello, thank you for hearing me out. My name is Matt Leigh, and I'm not a neighbor, but I live on Brook Road, so I live in the town. And I've been a customer of Thayer for about six years ago, shortly after I moved here. And I would just like to say, I think, as laid out in the Milton Vision, I think one of the good aspects about this town is that it is trying to strike a proper balance, I think, between commercial and residential development. And just top of my head, I know of three very large residential developments that are going on in town under the auspices of 40B. But the point of that is, I think, by effectively shutting down the landscaping business, you're effectively shutting down the nursery operations or hindering it to a point where alternative uses of the land will be done. And, you know, I kind of shudder to think what the uses of that land will be. In addition to that, I think that the services that they provide are so unique to this community. It's very valuable. I went to Maggie shortly after I moved here and asked her to support a cause of mine in South Boston. She has no connection to it, but she was more than willing to help out. It serves underprivileged kids. So I know right there that the character of the Oldfields is one that's a gift to this town. And I urge the committee to recommend the plans.
Okay.
My name is Pam Lepore. I abut the, I own the barn, abutting on the south side of the property. First of all, I want to make clear that none of the abutters ever had any intention or wanting to shut down their nursery. That's never even been an issue. What we're concerned about is what we moved, what I moved into 30 years ago and what it is today. They went from one truck to, how many trucks do you have now? Six. Zero bobcats to four bobcats. And it's the noise, it's, in moving the activities from one abutter to my property line, to me, is senseless and unthinkable. I look at the berm that you discussed earlier, and that's exactly where I'll be building a house in the near future. That's exactly where the septic system is going. And the runoff from Blue Hills, I see flooding. So that's not, the drainage has not been discussed or even brought up. So I just, like I said, I just want the nursery to go back to a nursery. They claim to be a farm. I would love for it to be a farm. I'd love to see crops there. I'd love to see animals. We just want the landscape portion moved to a commercial, commercially zoned district where it belongs. I see plenty of other nurseries that are successful, selling plants and other garden items. And like I said, we just, we never had any intention of wanting to close the nursery. We just want that commercial activity moved. Okay? Thank you.
Right, well, the, obviously, the noise on that, on that line, the noise dust is an issue, a big issue.
I've added drainage to your list earlier.
Add drainage?
Yeah.
I will, and I will, I will, I will make this available.
If they came up with a special permit, they would be, hopefully have to be in a position to require something like that.
Yeah, well, we have to make sure, we would have to make sure it's in the zoning in order to be able to require it, but...
But noise is, noise is a huge issue. In fact, it's probably the biggest issue, I think. I could be wrong, but that's what I've concluded from these hearing, this hearing to date. Yes, sir. Thank you for your documents. They were useful.
Again, thank you for having me. My name is Matthew Dunn. I represent John Rowe and Philip Duwanning. They own 23 Parkwood Drive in Milton, which is a direct abuter to Thayer's property. And to reiterate the previous speaker, my clients have no objection to the continuation of the nursery business that everyone has come accustomed to and that everyone loves in the town. It does add beauty to the community. What they have issue with is the expansion of the commercial activities that have occurred on the property since the nursery was permitted. And this board asked me to submit the zoning history of decisions from the ZVA, of which I did, and I understand that you have those. Just going back just very briefly, I mean, the site plan, it looks very nice, but that's really not what is before this board. That's not what the citizens petition is asking for. What the citizens petition is asking for is set forth in the language of the petition itself. And I think that an understanding needs to be reached as to what that is proposing. As it exists right now, the property is located in the residence 2A district. Their nursery is allowed to operate the permit, the nursery, under a special permit that was issued by the ZVA back in 1967. Since that time, the ZVA has attempted to give an inch, and in each occasion, their nursery has taken a yard. And that is outlined very clearly in each of the decisions that I provided to the planning board. There's supposed to be, it's supposed to be a residential development, residential use with an accessory nursery by special permit. What the citizens petition is proposing to allow in this neighborhood, and I think that the neighbors need to understand this, is that right now, what is not permitted is a landscaping business, a construction business, a snow plowing business, a retail sales business, firewood sales and delivery business, the storage of a large dumpster on the property, and the expansion of ours. Those are all things that would be allowed now in this residential historic Scottsville's neighborhood that is not allowed under existing zoning. So you're asking for an amendment to the zoning to allow all these commercial activities that have never been permitted there. Now, have they have been operating there? Yes. But on each instance, the zoning board of appeal has recognized that this is one step further from what they were, the Thayer nursery was supposed to be doing. And, you know, Thayer Nursery, you know, by all accounts, the Oldfields are great people, and they're being, they're running a very successful business, but, you know, they're a victim to their, to their own success in this instance, in that the property, and I think that this board has already touched upon it, has sort of already hit critical mass. I mean, what you have to start thinking about is, you know, if you allow the landscaping, construction, snow plowing, retail sales, firewood sales as of, by issuance of a special permit, well, what's going to be accessory to that? What's going to be, what's going to be alleged to be incidental to that? I mean, you're going to have a very different portrait in five years than what's being depicted on the site plan. And the history of the property indicates that this is, this is a constant expansion. And I think one of the planning board members has recognized that, that the history of non-compliance is a good indication of what's going to happen in the future. And you have a history from 1967 of non-compliance to the present day, where I sat before the zoning board of appeal, and Mr. Leonard said, you know, we've tried to do this. We've tried to accommodate these people by issuance of a special permit. And that hasn't worked. And so there needs to be basically a line in the sand. Now, like I said at the very beginning of this, and I'll close on it, no one is looking to close the nursery business. No one's looking to shut down items that are accessory or incidental to the nursery business. You know, this is just a far expansion of a use or uses that are inconsistent with the, with the residential character of the neighborhood. And there's not, it doesn't, there's no sufficient advantage to anybody else except for the Oldfields in this instance. And I won't reiterate what I spoke about in the last hearing, but, you know, there's, it's actually going to harm the town as a whole by decreasing the real estate tax revenue of the surrounding properties in the Scottsville's area by introducing or by allowing these very expansive commercial activities that have never been permitted there in the past and should not be going forward. So I thank you very much for your time, and I ask that the, that this board recommend that the... that the citizens' petition not be approved. Thank you.
Well, the, admittedly, the citizens' petition is very broadly written, and what we're partially talking about here is rewriting that so that it is very rigidly written, so that the definition of what is permitted and what is not is unmistakably clear. The citizens' petition, I, I think the planning board is, recognizes that if they were to have to recommend the citizens' petition as it is now written, they couldn't do it. But whether or not it would be possible to recreate it, to modify it, to put on conditions, whether or not that is possible is what we're working on. And at the end of the day, if we have come up with something that seems workable, I think the planning board would, might be willing to recommend that. But that's, that's what we're working towards, something that, that seems workable, that seems workable, and then to, to find out from the members whether or not we've done a good enough job. So...
Well, just to, to illustrate, these are conditions that were existed before the enforcement action was taken with, with the ZBA.
Yeah.
As to the materials that were stored on the property. I mean, this is, this is the type of activity and, on the property that you can anticipate when the landscaping business is reintroduced to the site. I know there's been talk about lighting. Here's a photograph of lighting from the property that was taken, I believe in December, of lights shining into 23 Parkwood from the property during Thayer Nursery's operation of some type of activity on the property after, after sunset. And then there's, there has been talk about the width of the streets and how they would accommodate, accommodate large deliveries. This is a photograph of the type of truck that delivers the kiln-dried firewood to the property. This is an eighteen-wheeled truck that's parked out in front of 23 Parkwood. The trucks, on occasion, before they arrive at the property, idle in different locations in the neighborhood. And in one instance, this is in my client's home. So, like I said, you're, none of these activities, save for the, so the nursery, are consistent with the Scotswoods District. And for those reasons, I'd ask that it, that the planning board not recommend the citizens' petition.
Oh, yeah, so you might as well show them to the folks in Bag.
So this is the eighteen-wheeler. It's a really nice-looking truck.
I know.
I have to park it from my house all the time.
All right, but, but, no, 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 no. Come on. Who else wants to be heard?
A question before, the, the people that you represent, would they be willing to make any suggestions as far as this article would be concerned, or is it just cut and dry that it's, they have no interest in anticipating any, like, any parameters to be set to allow this business to happen?
Matt, just for a second. I, I want to talk just about this particular section.
Okay, but identify yourself and speak into the microphone.
I'm Phil Joe Henning, 23 Parkwood Drive. Initially, in 1967, the Oldfields did not own lot N12-1B. It was immediately behind my house, and it is now where this all is. The 1967 special permit said that they could not expand their operation beyond the land they owned at that time. That's what the 1967 special permit said. Then, in 1987, they talked about, well, this lot 1B, which the Oldfields subsequently purchased, was not part of the original, the original plot. And the Oldfields said, oh, they, they didn't realize that. They, they didn't realize that they couldn't buy the other lot and expand onto it. So one of the things they talked about, and this was kind of funny at the zoning board of appeals, we were talking about this picture, and Mrs. King said, "Oh, I thought there were supposed to be hemlocks along the, the property line to shield the neighbors." And Mr. Deluna said, "That was thirty years ago." And she said, "Oh, I would have thought they'd be much bigger." The fact is that there were hemlocks there, and they were cut down. So, you know, we can have, like, a really good plan, and it can be executed perfectly, but then again, it could all be changed in a moment, like hemlocks being chopped down. It could, the, you know, we talk about five trucks, we talk about five trucks, and, you know, why wouldn't it be maybe twenty tomorrow? The problem is, in the town, is enforcement. And that is the problem that all of the neighbors have had all along. There's always a great plan, but nobody enforces the shield that was supposed to exist between my home and Thayer Nursery. Mr. Prondak doesn't enforce any of the restrictions that were in the 2002 decision. There are restrictions on hours. There are restrictions on when and where hydrocedars can be power washed. There are lots of restrictions, but when the power washing is being done on the weekend, Mr. Prondak isn't sitting in his office. So who am I going to call?
And also, he seems to say that since that case is under appeal, even though the papers have been lost, until the papers are found and the case decided, he's going to stand back.
Mr. Whiteside, you and I both know that the proper way to stop enforcement was an injunction which the Oldfields requested from Judge Davis. That is the way. An appeal doesn't stop enforcement. The ZBA's ruling of 2002 is the law of the land until the appeal is ruled on or an injunction is issued. Neither of those things happened. There was nothing stopping Mr. Prondak from enforcement. There was no injunction, and there was no contradictory decision. He had to enforce until such time as he was stopped by the court, and he didn't do that. He makes up a lame excuse, saying, "Well, well, there was an appeal." That appeal doesn't stop enforcement. It doesn't. And you and I both know that.
Well, I was just pointing out that because the papers have been lost, it appears like that appeal is never going to be decided.
But the appeal is meaningless. All we have is...
I, I understand. And you have, you have an enforcement problem.
Let me just reiterate that the 2002 decision stands, okay? And it must be, it must be enforced. Now, one other thing that...
But there is a procedure to compel the building inspector to enforce.
And we had a...
And he did it, he abused it.
Yes. And you know what Judge Garch ruled? She ruled that she would not force Mr. Prondak to do his job. She would not grant the writ of mandamus. But what she did say was, "I am not going to dismiss this cross claim." So what she said was, "I don't believe the case law was strong enough to force me to compel Mr. Prondak to do his job, but at the same time, I recognize that the neighbors have a case, and I will not dismiss." So there's another thing. You can see how close that barn where they store firewood is to my property line. My pool house is right there on the other side of the fence. We asked the fire marshal, or the fire chief, to go and inspect to see if there was fire suppression, because large amounts of firewood are stored in the barn at times. It, it, it's high after a delivery, and then it'll dwindle down. But the fact is that we have highly flammable, kiln-dried firewood stored inside a barn that is very close to Teaven's house and my house. And so we asked the fire chief in Milton to go and make a fire inspection. And he did not do that. He, he, he said that Mr. Prondak had made an inspection, and that the wood was stacked in such a way that fire was unlikely, and that he wasn't going to do his own inspection. Now, we have a fire chief for a reason. He's there to inspect related to fire safety and those kinds of things, but he didn't do that. He didn't even go to the property and look at it. So, you know, basic fundamental enforcement is, is a problem. Finally, the last thing I'll say is, on the day we did the site inspection on January the sixth, it was raining, and there was water flowing across that hard-packed driveway that Ned described. It actually goes right almost to the property line, and there was water flowing off that hard pack with oily film on it from diesel or whatever. And it's flowing right into my yard and into Teaven's yard. And that's another thing that's never worried about, like, a decision is reached, but nobody ever follows up to make sure that drainage is adequate. And in fact, if there's a heavy rain, my cellar will flood. Now, it didn't flood when I first moved in, but it does flood now. And my neighbors, the Coles, also had problems with basement flooding, and they had to dig a dry well and fill it with crushed stone to create a barrier from, from their basement flooding. So I didn't have it for probably the first two years that I lived there, but I have basement flooding now. And the Coles did, said that they never had a problem, but they had it up until they, they dug their dry well. So the town is completely lax in protecting the neighbors from the consequences of having a large-scale industrial business on that lot. And as far as I can see, there isn't a good chance of compromise, because as my attorney said, if you give the, the Oldfields a foot, they'll take a yard. And, and, you know, I don't blame them, and I, I think they really do run a good business. And I really do think that it's a beautiful facility, for the most part, except the corner that touches my property. And I do wish them success, but I do think that commercial construction, commercial landscaping, and firewood need to be removed. And the town gives a significant tax advantage to the, to the Oldfields for their farm, the farm exemption. It, it's in excess of $500,000 on the value of their property. So they're paying $6,000 on the nursery portion of the land, and we, the abutters, pay in excess of, we pay sixty. The, the Oldfields pay no excise tax on any vehicles because they're registered as farm vehicles. But they are not used as farm vehicles. In fact, they're used to deliver firewood, they're used for the organic lawn program. In, in fact, you know, what's going on is that, I, I hear about the generosity, and I'm sure that, that the Oldfields are generous in supporting certain causes, but in effect, they're taking from us, the neighbors, in, in terms of quality of life, by operating businesses that are not permitted there. And they're taking from the town by operating commercial businesses on, on property which was given a farm exemption. And they're using vehicles where no excise tax is paid because they have farm plates, and they drive all around the countryside delivering firewood and material for landscaping jobs and things like that. So, I mean, I'm, I'm all for it, but I, I don't see, I, I don't see those three commercial businesses existing, coexisting with us, the neighbors, all right?
It seems to me the crux of your problem is, has to do with enforcement. Would you say that's true?
No.
No?
No, you didn't.
The, the, the Oldfields, I, I think you saw in Ned's photograph, they had, they call it a mulch pile, I'll call it a manure pile, within yards of my pool all summer long. And just when the smell got to the acceptable level, they turned it over, because it has to be aerated, or whatever they said. And, and it, the smell was tremendous. So I, I guess what I'm saying is, it's, one, a lack of consideration for the neighbors, not thinking about how they, they would feel having a manure pile right next to their property line. I mean, if they want, I, I'm all for organic gardening, and, and that's great, but why don't they put it next to their house? If they're going to sell it, and they're, they're staunch advocates, put it next to their house, not next to mine.
It says, they say they're going to do that.
No, they're putting it next to Pam Lapore's house.
No, putting it next to Josh's house.
Yeah, but that's right next to Pam Lapore.
Well, yes.
I have a, a major field. I live on Hillside Street.
Why don't you come up and join us at the table?
I know, I'm not good at that, thank you. But I do have to say that I have a manure pile next to my house, and he has a manure pile next to his. There's only one house separating his house from a manure pile, the stables are, are right there on Hillside Street. I'm on one side of the stables, and he's on the other side of the stables. I bought my house knowing, I didn't buy the house, my children bought the house, knowing that there was manure there. And I, so I smelled the manure. So people visiting me smelled the manure. I mean, that's Hillside Street. It's an agricultural area, and it's on the Scotswoods National Register Historic Places because it is an agricultural area, and manure goes with agriculture. I'm not saying that...
Goes with horses, certainly.
It can be.
It goes with horses, but the stable, the stable is a, is a very important feature of the neighborhood. And horses do...
And so is Thayer Nursery.
Yeah, manure.
We'll edit it.
So back to the board member's question.
Why don't you come up and do, you don't get the same...
So back to the board member's question. You asked, "We're willing to try to remedy the situation. Can you ask them again what we can do to help resolve this issue so we can coexist?"
I think that we, we've heard the, the issues, and we know what the issues are, and there are remedies, and I think they can be, they can be determined.
How can we remedy the enforcement?
The enforcement, I think that we've got to, we cannot assume that the town will not enforce the law, the, the rulings of the board, that, we can't assume that. We have to assume that Mr. Prondak will do his job. And as far as I can see, Mr. Prondak is a diligent individual, and certainly, yes.
I was going to say, your point to creating a process whereby the permit runs for a certain number of years and then comes in for review, I think would go quite a ways to answering that question, because if somebody comes in and says, you know, the permits come up for review, neighbors come back and say, "Look, they haven't done any of this. Here's pictures showing what was supposed to happen, and here's pictures showing that this absolutely didn't happen." That then gives the planning board at that time material to say, "Well, you didn't do what we requested, and therefore we can't renew the special permit." So that review is actually a really interesting idea, and I think, and other towns have used that process of granting short-term reviews, Alex.
I think I shortened that suggested duration. I don't think it would be five years, it would be a, a much shorter duration.
You could, you could do an initial one.
I don't want the building inspector out there doing his, doing his thing, but this would, this would just be a chance to give a, a broad overview of the entire situation and a public hearing of it.
Right.
If I may, I, I don't think it's at all unfair to suggest that you would have renewable reviews, and if they're shorter, they're shorter. And a tight leash might be appropriate. And, you know, it gives the town comfort that things are moving forward as they're supposed to, and they, and the... And the, if the findings are that they're not in compliance, then, you know, you don't renew the permit.
You could certainly do, say, for example, come in for a special permit. If it's granted, you do the first one with a renewal in three years. If everything's satisfactory at the three-year one, you could do the next one for five years and extend it there. If it's not satisfactory, obviously, the board then makes their decision based on that information. But that's a possibility. And that would allow the shorter time review for the first one that you suggest.
I'd like to see the first one be a year. I mean, I'm just maybe playing devil's advocate to one side, but, you know, if I'm the neighbor and you say, yeah, three years, and well, I gotta put up with things for a year and a half into it, I find things, and then you just review it in three years, and it's gonna take a period of time to reverse things. And from the history, I see it's a slow process to get things resolved.
So then, one of the things we will need to talk about is what the appropriate first, first, how do you structure the zoning to allow for a shorter first review period? What parameters do you do that? And then how do you structure it to allow for a renewal that's longer if everything is satisfactory? So, yeah.
That's, that's more reasonable.
I think that could work.
All right. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Scott Johnson, 11 Hillside Street. I wanna talk about, first of all, I like the idea of the renewable permit where its enforcement is evaluated on a regular basis. That I think addresses the concerns of the people that are the abutters. I've been around this issue now for at least 15 years, when the first thing happened. And I wanna talk to the abutters specifically. And 15 years ago, they were complaining about bobcat noise. And I actually personally, as I, I just moved into the neighborhood, I drew up a plan that would maybe try to avoid, help avoid, or alleviate some of their concerns. Noise and dust were the big things at the time. And these abutters say they don't wanna put this business out of business. And I wanna talk to them about compromise, but that plan was, I personally felt I got a very cool reception from them as an unbiased neighbor trying to settle what I thought was a needless argument. There was no sense of compromise on the abutters' part. But what I wanna say to them now is, you don't know what you got till it's gone.
Oh, yeah, you do.
There was a driveway dispute down the street from us about a year ago. I signed the petition, not thinking about the unforeseen consequences. And now, several neighbors that were uninvolved are actively involved in staving off 77 units of 40B housing. Now, I own a business that deals with businesses. And the reality, whether we like it or not, from a compromised standpoint, is that what you have now is a lot better than what you can get. And that is, if you take 50% of the revenues away from a business, can it survive or can't it? And that's a very serious cut in revenue. And if you do do that, and that could possibly force a sale of that land, and like that driveway, you should think seriously about what you might get instead of that. It's just something that is a much more big, broad picture than we're looking at. And I think that everybody here is willing to compromise. They've already said to everybody that they're willing to take suggestions. And you say you don't wanna put them out of business, but you take 50% of the revenue from somebody and you effectively are putting them out of business. Whether, you know, I've seen letters where they've accused them of breaking the law. They were operating under a permit that was recently revoked. That's not breaking the law. So, my point is, you should think long and hard before you drive this too-hard bargain, before you get all of us in the neighborhood in a jam that none of us wanna be in. And I'm just begging that you really start to get along with people rather than fight with people.
My question is, what makes you think you can't survive at another location?
Why can't you go to Stoughton and run your landscape operation? Why are you giving up on that part of your business?
Why don't you move to Brockham?
No, wait, whoa, whoa, whoa. Let her talk.
No, seriously. Why are you saying if they can't have the landscape?
Well, I mean, you're asking, you're asking, you're asking.
That doesn't make sense.
She's asking whether or not moving the business out of town is an option.
The landscape portion, the landscape portion of the business. Why are you saying that?
It's more money.
Well, okay, why don't you have a seat and say why, why you can't just.
I have a field, I live at 237 Hillside. The landscaping business has been in existence since 1963, when my father bought the property. You guys have misled, saying it's been a nursery only. Growing up, the nursery component was a very small part of it. My father had the plowing contract for Milton Hospital. He had, he bought the first bobcat in New England in 1969. It was primarily a landscaping operation.
Well, it doesn't appear to be that now. The noise is unbearable.
Well, okay, but we, you guys don't get to, you get to answer the question, but you don't get to have a discussion.
Okay. So, the question is, so it has been a landscaping company since day one. So, I feel like, number one, it is too challenging to move off-site because we are such a small company. We only have six vehicles for both aspects of the business. So, that means we now would have to go out and purchase six more, just so six are at one site and six are at another site. So, it's not just going to rent another property.
Takes the nursery business alone, perennials, annuals, bagged mulch, cash-and-carry shrubs. You need six vehicles?
On some days, because our size of deliveries are different.
No, I'm talking about cash-and-carry.
I know. Most people, though, cannot cash-and-carry a tree in the back of their car. Where we have a lot of clients who are landscape contractors. We do not install for them. They purchase the, you as a homeowner will come in and pick out your product and then you will send.
I've done it, Maggie. I've shot it.
Right. And then, then we would deliver to your site and you would have another landscaper install it. So, that does not have anything to do with our landscaping services.
I just find it difficult to comprehend that you couldn't survive and be successful at another location. And you'd have to buy all new equipment.
We would need.
I think what, and I think the short answer to all of that is, this is, it is a small business. It is an integrated business, and it would be a significant additional expense to operate out of two locations, whether you rent or own. You're doubling your cost, the holding cost, your annual operating cost. You've got to insure two locations. You've got to insure much more significant. The cost of operating from more than one location is significant in terms of time, in terms of money. It just can't be done at this level. And what the Old Fields are saying is that if that's what is required to happen, then the likelihood is they're going out of business.
Okay, that's the, that's the, that's the answer. That's the answer to your question. And you can disagree with it, but that's what they say.
I can tell you from experience with other similar clients that it was a very, very difficult process to relocate, even for a short period of time. It is very difficult to operate at this level from more than one location.
Also, it would seem to me that your goodwill, if you moved to Stoughton, say, where you're currently located, your goodwill in Stoughton would be, you'd have to recreate it.
And then divide. So, if Stoughton Public School System wants a donation, it would be less than, because we would have to give to two locations. We would have to have two sets of employees. Well, now, there's a crossover of our employees depending on how it's needed.
Okay, now. All right, I hear you. I see you.
I see two locations, bigger business, more exposure. I don't think that way. And you expanded the landscape portion knowing it was against the bylaws, so why should we?
It wasn't against the bylaws. We had a special permit in 1967 to have landscaping.
Yes, but not to, not with the noise that you're subjecting us to, not to the dust, not to the traffic. Those were all restrictions on your special permit. So, you've expanded your business and now you want the abutters to pay for this, and that's not fair.
Okay.
That's not right.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you talking to me, sir?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Have a seat and introduce yourself.
Well, you want me to introduce myself again? I'm Heidi Costros, and I am that.
Heidi, well, introduce yourself again.
Yes, all right. I am a customer of Thayer Nurseries, but I'd like to say two things. One thing as a professional and another thing as a landscape planner for the town of Wellesley. So, and I'm an elected official and a volunteer. Chair of the Natural Resources Commission and as such, statutory Parks Commissioner and Tree Warden. I deal with the tree warden and I know your landscape people quite well, too, in Milton. Now, the first thing I'd like to tell you, that I came via Dr. Dunn to Thayer because I was hired to redo his landscape and found Thayer on the side street at the recommendation of Dr. Dunn. I walked over and I was so impressed, not just with the quality of the material, but with the skills, that Josh, who was standing there when I came in the door, I recognized his skills. By the way, he majored in landscape architecture at the University of Maine. But as I, I was a little skeptical because the nursery looked awfully small to me and the crew looked very inexperienced to me. They were very young and very cute. So, my next step was to hire them. They did a fantastic job and realized that this was the best crew I ever had. Now, I'm not going to talk about crews or anything of that. But I came back for every project I did in this region. And some of my clients were here tonight. And I would like to tell you that you have a very special town. Now, the special town is basically full of every problem that every other town has in these parts of Massachusetts, including taking care of your iconic landscapes. And you have them. The nursery that you see up there was here first. It's been here since the late 1800s and it was a small farm. And now it has grown into its contemporary life. This is what you have in order to save open space. I came back recently from the Metro West Planning Council and heard a story and was exposed to the planning of Sherbin. Now, Sherbin has small farms, very much like Thayer is or was. A developer bought it to put up three homes. Three McMansions would have fitted quite comfortably. And the neighborhood objected, including the planning board. So, he turned around and got a 40B. And it went through and it's going up. Now, I understand a little bit about this business and I can tell you that the nursery business is not going to sustain the Thayer Nursery or the Old Fields. It will, the ultimate nightmare is that it will go on the market and you have three McMansions, which become a burden to the town, as you well know. We have the same problem in Wellesley with an overcrowding school system. But not, not just that. The neighborhood's real estate taxes will be comparatively in line with the McMansions. So, you're not saving on it by getting rid of open space. And with three McMansions, you're tying up the open space. It becomes no longer accessible to anybody except the owners. Right now, you can go into the nursery, and as this lady said here, you can walk around, you can daydream about your own garden, and you can sit down, bring your cup of coffee, and they're welcome. If you have three homes, that's gone. That open space is gone. And that is what I admired about what you are planning here. We went through all of that, so did Weston, so did Dover. This workshop you have on Saturday, I hope you're all going to be there. This piece here. There. Look what it says on the bottom. Preserving our past, planning for the future. Isn't that what this is all about?
Certainly, that's what Saturday's gonna be all about.
Absolutely.
But isn't this the destiny of Milton, preserving the future?
A rhetorical question.
Yes, of course it is. It's for all of us a rhetorical question. But don't we want to hope that that's what's going to happen? And doesn't a small nursery, comparatively small nursery, with one of the finest landscape crews that I have ever worked with in my 30 years?
You're landscaping the landscaping, right?
I am landscaping the landscaping. No, I am, and by the way, I'm a volunteer for the Old Fields. I don't get paid by them. So, I do it because I don't, I want to keep their construction business going so I can use them selfish, but I can use them in the future.
All right, thank you.
I live at 107 Hillside Street. And we've lived there for 10 years and we love everything about it. We love the country feel, we love the horses, and we especially love the nursery. I have four children and their childhood has been filled with walks along our beautiful street up to feed the goat and different events at Thayer Nursery. So, I would encourage your support of the nursery. I understand that it's difficult for abutters and I would encourage the nursery to work with the abutters to fix their concerns. And I also wanna agree with what Scott Johnson had mentioned earlier, that I think we're at a particular risk for development in our neighborhood because there is so much untouched beautiful land. And, you know, with the lack of a master plan, I hope everyone realizes that we are a prime target. And although, you know, the petitions may not have sought to shut Thayer Nursery down, you know, someone mentioned earlier, the plan sometimes changes. Well, what if it does change? And what if this does shut Thayer Nursery down? You know, we can't decide. I don't know what their budget is, but what if taking their firewood away and taking their other, you know, income away, what if it does shut them down? Then what happens? Then, you know, the land could be sold. We're at risk for, you know, high-density 40B developments, McMansions. And I think it's, based on our experience with other proposals in our neighborhood, I don't wanna take that risk. And I wanna let everybody know that, from what we have seen, it's very real and I think we can't be naive to think that it won't happen. And our neighborhood is so beautiful and you would think it could never happen. And I personally have watched us be at risk for that. And I wanna preserve that country feel and I wanna walk down the streets and take my children up to the nursery. And, you know, Maggie's been so generous to host different neighborhood events and it's the highlight of my kids' years. And I remember that. And the neighbors all have a connection to each other and, you know, that's, I think, why I picked this neighborhood. I believe in neighborhoods and I believe what they can bring to each other and to the families and to the town. And I think the absence of Thayer Nursery would be a horrible tragedy for our neighborhood and for our town.
So, you're thinking that there can be a reasonable accommodation between the various parties?
I do, I do. And I think, you know, I hear the valid concerns, you know, and I think the more discussion and more, as you had mentioned, specifics, like that needs to be worked out and people should say what their specific concerns are and we should fix them and come together as a plan so that it works. It has to work, it has to, because the consequences are far too great. So, thank you.
Okay.
Phil Joe Henning, Parkwood Drive. You know, I still, I think, Alex, that perhaps your faith in town administration to actually make sure that the rules are followed. I mean, I don't know why you would presume that when you have a lot of documentation that shows that they simply do not. So, you know, you want to start with that and I understand it, but you have evidence right before your eyes that they don't enforce.
Would we write a permit if we thought we were just throwing it in the wastebasket because no one would enforce it? I mean, we've got to assume that our permits would be enforced.
But there have been permits in 1967, 1987. There have been additional rules in 2002 and no one has enforced them. So, they were basically fodder for the trash can. And the other question I have is, I understand everybody else's concerns about, like, preserving the neighborhood and we would like to do that, but at what cost to us? Like, you have noticed that no one who sat here speaking so beautifully about the nursery wasn't a butter, not one, because the cost to us is immense. You know, I understand that they all want a place to go to enjoy. I would like to enjoy my backyard. What about me and my backyard? Do I have a right to that? When the manure is out in my backyard, I understand Marge has her horses, but I bought into a residence AA district in the town of Milton. I did not expect manure in my backyard. I didn't. You know, maybe I was foolish, but I didn't. Now, the other thing I would like to say is that, you know, this whole thing about this hysteria about 40B strikes me a little bit odd because we have no sewer in the Hillside neighborhood. You know, the, when people may say that they're going to build 77 units on property near you, I find it hard to believe.
They say they're going to install a sewer.
That's a really high cost. I talked to Joe Lynch and Joe Lynch told me-
It is, in fact.
Well, let me just, let me just, let me just finish. Joe Lynch told me that whoever installs the sewer has to connect everyone along the way. He said the cost is absolutely immense and it could not be economically done. You couldn't make enough money on the 77 units. So, when I was at one of the ZBA hearings, you know, Maggie basically threatened me and said, "I'll sell my property for 40B." It's a threat in what we're doing, which is trying to protect our rights as property owners. You know, I understand she can sell it as 40B. I don't think she will. She talks about the history of her family on the property and they're going to sell it for 40B tomorrow? I don't think so. They don't have sewer either. She told me she would bring it in. I don't think it's economically viable either.
It would be an attractive double-A residential development without 40B. I mean, you could put three or four new houses in there.
To tell you honestly, Alex-
Plus the houses that are there. I mean, you might prefer that, but we're not, you know, 40B, we've been under the 40B threat so much recently that it doesn't, it doesn't, it isn't anything that is going to be a major factor here.
Let's get back to the issue that I asked you about, though, and that is, what cost are you willing to impose on me? Pam Leporey, Chris Stevens, you Cole? What price are you willing to put on us? You know? None of them sat here and said, "It was a really beautiful place, we love it." None of them were here to do that. All we do is get the cost, the additional cost, and it's a high price to pay.
There should not be an unreasonable cost for you.
It already is.
But it already is, but if it's mitigated, perhaps it can be made reasonable.
It was supposed to be mitigated with hemlocks along my property.
Have things changed? My understanding is they're not operating the landscape business out of this location presently.
I wouldn't agree to that, but it's winter primarily. That's the main reason why they're not doing it. I'm kind of curious about what is the address in Stoughton. I would like to go visit that and see. I'd like to drive over there and see which trucks have been moved over there.
You know, as I'm sitting here, I'm thinking, as you're speaking, I have no right to speak for you or, you know, but I'm interpreting it almost in my own mind that it is the enforcement that is the problem with you, that if it could be accommodated so that your backyard, you don't smell manure or you don't get dust go off the across there in the summertime when you're trying to enjoy your yard, maybe it would be a different situation.
So, how are you going to do that 24/7? Is it going to be the police that will now take responsibility for zoning enforcement?
Well, again, I'm just thinking, you know, maybe you should try to have some input. I mean, I think what-
This is my input.
Alex described at the beginning that, you know, that this is just trying to come up with an article, that whether or not it goes forward is another thing.
John Leonard at the Zoning Board of Appeals-
You should participate in the development of this article, whether or not it goes forward. You can still disagree with it.
John Leonard at the Zoning Board of Appeals said that they, that the Zoning Board of Appeals has worked since 1967 to try to find an accommodation between the neighbors and the nursery. And his conclusion was that he can't do that anymore and he's not going to try. And the reason for that is because our goals are mutually exclusive. They want to run a large and successful business and God bless them, but it's a residence AA district.
Okay.
Could I just-
Yeah, sure.
Hi, Mike Pellegrini, 92 Forest Street. I'm about three houses down from the nursery. And just a few quick points that I voiced up last time. It's really unfortunate that there's a couple folks here that don't seem to want to find that middle ground. And you said it a little bit earlier that, you know, what was his crux of his issue? What was, what's his problem, you know, with the nursery? Because you were having trouble following, as I was, as I was sitting here, the reasoning behind it. So, I think it's important to just not be on such a, you know, witch hunt or looking for the bad and the negative in things, but to listen to your neighbors who are here tonight in support of this nursery that we all care about and we want in our neighborhood. And I think you should really, you know, as a whole, you should listen to the rest of us to just appreciate these voices and that you have such good neighbors who care so much about the neighborhood. And list out your problems so that the board and others could identify and come up with some good ideas of attacking those problems, knocking them down. I see the other side here, the Old Fields, that shake their head yes when people are talking, they're pointing at the charts on the wall and they're, I believe they're trying to be reasonable and accommodating to what has come up. But we just need to sort of list these things out so we can all get a better handle on this instead of it just spiraling out of control from a mulch pile to town members not doing their jobs. It's really just changing quite a bit tonight as I sit here and listen.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Can I go?
Yeah, you can.
My name is Melissa Walter and I'm at 292 Hillside Street. And so, this is difficult for me because I've been in the neighborhood about 14 or 15 years. And we had a nice relationship for a long time and I looked forward to living across from you. Beautiful space. But I do feel in the past few years that there's been some, you've become a little dismissive to the neighborhood complaints. And I have an email that you had sent to me. I had called you on Mother's Day a couple years ago because you were using a Bobcat at 8:30 in the morning. And I said, you know, "Give me a call so we can talk about this and see where we can go with this." And you wrote me an email back and you said, "Yes, you were using," and I won't read the whole thing, but you said you were using the Bobcat at 8:30. Our sign does say, "We open at 10:00 a.m. However, as I say to my employees, we have to be here to serve our customers and sometimes that's before the posted time. I'm sorry the noise disturbed you, but there was no way I could lift the plant material that needed to be delivered as a Mother's Day present. I honestly feel we try to be accommodating to the neighborhood as much as we possibly can, but if a situation arises where we need to use equipment, we feel we have that right to do so." And I kind of think that that's dismissive of other people's sleep time, you know, quiet time, Sundays. And I think that that's what is upsetting a lot of people. And it makes me sad because we were, you know, we talked a lot. We always, you know, conversed. So, it makes me feel bad to be up here and to oppose it. And I don't want the nursery to go away, but I do want the trucks to go away. I mean, you look at my side of the street compared to your side of the street, your trucks swing wide and my side of the street is demoed. And, you know, nobody ever comes over and says, you know, "Can we rake up? Can we fill a hole? You know, what can we do?" And, you know, when the rocks get banged up, and I understand they get banged up, but don't make me have to come over and ask for you to fix them. Can't you just fix them? So, you know, I'm sorry that it's come to this, but that's all I have to say. Did you call me? Can I give you my cell number since I never check the home number? Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name's Catherine Ellis and I live on 30 Barbury Lane, which is just behind Parkwood Drive. I've been, I've lived in the neighborhood for 10 years. We did our due diligence before we bought our land and built our house and we're working with the Inspector Prondak at the moment to do a sunroom addition. And I just want to reiterate the concerns about what the future may hold because I have two kids on the bus and they already sit in a seat of three kids without a seatbelt. But I think the alternatives, it sounds, you know, that there is compromise to be made on both sides of the party. But I came to this neighborhood because it reminded me of Ireland and the smell of manure is the smell of horses. So, unless we shoot the horses, I don't know what we're going to do. But it's just, it amazes me how much our neighborhood's divided in this cause and it's like peeling off a Band-Aid. It just keeps going on and on over the years. You know, buyer beware. I knew the previous tenant, the owner of the building that these guys live in, and it was the same concern in every party. It was just a poison of how people felt about each other because they lived next to each other. And my sister moved to this country 25 years ago, bought a house next to P.A. Landers in Hanover and she knew what she was buying. There's 150 trucks going in and out of there every day, but she got it at a discount and she felt this was her piece of America that she owned and an acre of land in Hanover. I just wanted to make sure that you guys appreciate that we all come from very diverse backgrounds. We're living the American dream by being able to live in a beautiful neighborhood and sustain that neighborhood is very critical for the well-being of my family and my children. I think there's disputes here that can be easily rectified. I own a small business. I know if somebody took 50% of my business away, I'd have to lay off at least 15 people. So, that concerns me as well. There's not enough small businesses in Milton and that's why our real estate taxes keep getting higher. So, on behalf of the real estate tax, you know, I really do feel the need to say something because our neighborhood has changed so much in the last three years and the fight just keeps continuing. First of all, it was the music at the nursery, then it was the flame retardant killed in dried wood. I mean, it's just never going to end. I think if you move to this town, never mind the noise of the airplanes, that's what you get. You live in a beautiful neighborhood, 11 miles from Boston and at an affordable price. And I don't think many people can say that, but if we keep getting people that disgruntled and pushing, you know, their agendas, it's not fair in everybody else. And I don't want to walk down my street and not say hi to my neighbors. I think that's very disturbing. I come from Northern Ireland and we have a lot of bigger problems out there. So, I just hope you would rectify the issue as compromise is the key. If the Catholics and Protestants can compromise in Northern Ireland, maybe we can sit around the table and compromise here. Thank you very much.
Well, we certainly, we certainly do hope to rectify the issue. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Tina Harren and I live on Heather Drive, which is a little bit away from Thayer Nursery, but I just came for a couple of reasons, both personally and professionally. Personally, they have been very generous to the town, but the other thing is I moved to Heather Drive 12 years ago and I live not far from Randolph Ave. I live very close to Wallaston Golf Course. I live very close to Newcombe Farms, Eagle Farm and Thayer Nursery. So, I'm smack in the middle of a lot of activity. And I've had many people say to me, "Why would you ever live so close to Randolph Ave? It's crazy. You have small children, they could run out there and they could get killed." And I knew what I bought. I knew when I moved there, what to do. And yes, Randolph Ave has changed tremendously. We have cars going 100 miles an hour. We had a fatal accident Thanksgiving morning, but yet I knew that. It's changed. You make accommodations for those changes. I make sure my children, when they come out of the driveway, never go right towards Randolph Ave. I make sure that the school bus turns off of Randolph Ave onto Heather Drive. You make those accommodations for it. You don't shut down a business. My husband had a business problem three years ago and he lost about 50% of his business and in that process, he laid off people. And in this economy, anyone losing a job is huge. When I moved here 12 years ago, Wallaston Golf Course did not have 300 members at it that it does now, but that was a business that needed to change to survive. Eagle Farm wasn't doing things probably under their license. They've expanded their business. I mean, you go in there now and you buy Crocs and they're labeled, you know, garden shoes. But is my three-year-old really wearing garden shoes? I mean, so everybody kind of stretches things a little bit. I'm not going to report Eagle Farm. I'm not going to report what goes on at Newcombe Farm. We could all get reported. I could have reported foul in ambulance, parking ambulances in my neighborhood when they were waiting to get into where they parked their trucks. I just think it's so sad that you have a whole neighborhood now where you're going to have people that don't want to talk to their neighbors. It's awful. And if they don't come to a compromise, people are never, they're going to lose that. They're never going to get over it. You know, my husband is a lawyer and he'll say, "What makes the best neighbor is a great fence." And that's sad, you know? You're going to have a bunch of fences, not actual fences, but people will have fences between themselves personally. And I think you've got to work together and figure it out. And as I said, I live at Heather and I'm in the middle of a lot of activity. And I love where I live. I'd never move. I mean, I came back to Milton and picked this spot for a reason, but, you know, that's life and if we lose another business, we really are, our taxes are going to get killed. And even if it's not a 40B, I agree with what Ms. Ellis was saying, those buses are crowded, the schools are crowded. We don't need any more kids. But that's all I just want to say. I love children, but I just don't want to talk.
John Rowe, 23 Parkwood Drive. My question is, I don't understand why by moving the staging area of the construction, landscaping and firewood sales off of this site will ruin the business. We're simply asking that the staging area of all of these commercial businesses that are now not allowed to take place in the Residence AA District, this is not a continuation. The town has said it's not allowed. This is to change the zoning to allow this. So, the question is, why can't you continue your business by just moving the staging area of these commercial construction, large-scale landscaping operation? area of these commercial construction, large-scale landscaping operation?
Okay. That's going to be a question to Mr. Kirkram.
It's just not that simple.
It's just not that simple?
Nothing is simple. Everybody works hard, and this is a business...
But moving to Stoughton is a large leap. Even I can understand that.
It's a huge change. It is double cost. You're operating out of more than one location. You have to have employees manning both locations. You have to have insurance to cover both locations. You have to develop goodwill in both locations. It is a significant additional economic burden to this business. It's one set of costs to operate in one location. It's half again, if not double, to operate out of two locations. It just can't be done economically.
This is a Residence Double A Zone.
It's actually a Residence A Zone.
It is a Residence A Zone.
Not a Double A. It's not that that makes a big difference, but it's Residence A.
It's a Residence Zone where these types of businesses are not permitted. And this zoning introduces allowing this type of business to exist in the Residence A Zone. A lot of people have talked about due diligence. I did my due diligence. I bought the house in a Residence A Zone, and I bought a home next to a nursery, which I thought at the time was a very good thing to do. After we moved in, it was then that we found out that they are running a large-scale commercial landscape construction company, the sale of kiln-dried firewood that is stored in a warehouse on the property. And, you know, we went to the town and said, "Gee, what's going on over here?" And it evolved, you know, to hearings in front of the ZBA. And the ZBA, the Town of Milton, said, "These are not permitted uses," and they...
Eventually, they said that. But in '67, and then there was the creep after '67. I mean, if this were a brand-new business, and someone was going to say, "I want to open up a landscaping business in an A Zone," it wouldn't happen. But something that's been going on since 1960, probably the '50s...
Well...
Is different. It is different because there is a long history that you have to consider.
And yes, there is a very, very long contentious history...
Well, exactly.
Between Thayer Nursery and the Town of Milton.
It's a contentious history, but it's a history. And it's been going on for a long time. And the effort is being made to regularize what they're doing, to make it a better experience for all involved, most especially you. So I mean, the...
The law of the land is, right now, that this is not permitted. And that is the law.
And there is a zoning proposal to make it permitted, and the effort is being made to not unduly penalize you.
And that's, you know, my concern is that you're changing, you're allowing commercial industrial operations in a Residence A Zone. The zoning in this town has protected property owners and the health and welfare of all citizens. The Town of Milton is beautiful. It would not be as beautiful as it is today, I do not believe, if it weren't for the 1938 zoning ordinance.
It'd be like Houston.
No, it would probably be like Waymouth. No offense to anyone who lives in Waymouth, but we have a beautiful town here. And I hate to see the zoning change for one small parcel of land to benefit one party only at the detriment of the entire neighborhood, as well as the tax revenues that are brought in by the Town of Milton. I had a discussion with the town, the chief of assessors, Jeff Dambly, on Tuesday afternoon. And I asked him, I said, "In theory, if you have a residential property that abuts a commercially-zoned property, in theory, what would happen to that residential, the value of the residential land?" And he said, "Well, in theory, the value of the residential land that abuts commercial property falls. It goes down." And I do believe that that's what's going to happen here. All of the abutting properties are going to lose value. Therefore, the town loses tax revenue. The town should be concerned about maintaining existing tax revenue and increasing revenue. And this, by changing this, it's going to decrease the revenue simply because the nursery enjoys an agricultural exemption, which I have no issue with. I think it's a wonderful thing that the nursery is afforded the agricultural tax exemption. But you shouldn't get an agricultural tax exemption and run a large-scale commercial landscape construction company on the property.
That's absolutely right. And the landscaping business should not be given an agricultural exemption. Right, but taxes are... I didn't mention them, but they are part of my list.
Okay. And one of the things, and I did ask, in 2003, the town took the agricultural exemption away from Thayer Nursery, and this was as a result of the 2002 ZBA rulings. You know, as everybody's aware, it's been a contentious situation, really, almost from the get-go. And so in 2003, the town denied their agricultural exemption, and Thayer challenged it, and it was reinstated. And I asked Mr. Dambly, I said, "In the likelihood that..." I said, "If the zoning was changed on this piece of property, would Thayer lose their agricultural exemption?" And he said, "It is very highly unlikely." So, and these are things, I asked if he would speak at town meeting on this, and he said he would not, that I need to talk to the board of assessors, and my intention is to talk to the board of assessors about this exemption. And if the property is zoned as commercial, are they going to maintain this?
They're not entitled to the exemption. It seems to me the zoning should make clear that they don't get it.
I've had this discussion with Maggie. It's clear in my mind that if this becomes zoned for landscaping, then the portion of the property, at least that is specifically dedicated to that use, becomes subject to the commercial tax rate. It has to. It cannot enjoy... It cannot operate as a business and enjoy an exemption that's not related to the business that would now be allowed by zoning.
That makes sense to me.
Sure. And this is all in theory, you know, and how do you divvy up the land?
Well, I mean, how do assessors divvy up anything? I mean, they figure it out.
Exactly. But, well, yes, they figure something out.
Yeah, but the short... I mean, the shorter answer is that whatever exemptions they've enjoyed in the past, for whatever reason, would go away, at least with respect to the landscaping element of...
Primarily landscaping.
Exactly. I mean, it has to. It can't not. And I know that's a tough pill to swallow, but it has to. That's a cost that they're going to have to absorb if this landscaping overlay is approved.
And my concern is, none of this that we're talking about here is in the citizen's petition. And, you know, I just, in closing, I want to say, you know, this is a Residence A Zone that doesn't allow this type of activity. It does not allow it today. And the ZBA has said, "Whatever you've done in the past, you have to stop." Thayer went to Norfolk County Superior Court and asked for an injunction, and Judge Sands denied the injunction.
Judge Davis.
Judge Davis denied the injunction. And we don't see that any of the construction materials that Mr. Prondak said in an affidavit... Let me back up a little bit. We brought a cross-claim against the town because we don't believe that the town is enforcing the ZBA's rulings of September 26 to cease and desist all of this, the construction and the landscaping. And there were affidavits stating that the landscaping business had been moved and that the construction business would be moved by mid-January. I live right behind there, and I do not see that any of the construction materials that you showed were in the picture have been moved. They're all still there. So we've talked about these things. I guess I'm just very, I'm against changing residentially-zoned areas to allow commercial businesses. And I really think that's the crux of it. And yes, it's going to hurt me financially, and it's going to hurt the town financially, and it's going to hurt the entire neighborhood to allow this. Right now, we have had these businesses that have been operating on the property for many, many years, under special permits, that have tried to regulate it. It's continued to grow. No one has been able to regulate this. If we change the zoning to allow these activities, I shudder to think what this parcel of land is going to morph into when they're not flying under the radar anymore. You know, this is a huge concern of mine, and we talked about, you know, looking at the permits, you know, if they're up for review, you know. And what's going to happen, I fear, is that if there is a compromise and the zoning is changed, I'm going to be in front of you people constantly. And I'm going to call, and you're going to say, "Oh, call Mr. Prondak." And I'll say, "Call Mr. Prondak." And it's just going to be a cycle that will never end. And that's my concern.
All right. Well, you've definitely got an enforcement issue, and I don't know what Mr. Prondak would say. But we do count on the building inspector to enforce the law and the permits.
And yes, and I think you have to, and I agree.
And I mean, if he... We rely on him to do it. And if he doesn't do it, if he doesn't do his job, he shouldn't have his job. But that's, you know, that's...
Right.
That is, the bottom line is that he is the enforcement official.
Right.
And if there is a super enforcement in that there's a periodic review, it seems to me that that, and it is shown that there has been no enforcement. I mean, us trying to review what has gone on at the Board of Appeals that we haven't been party to is a little bit difficult for us.
Oh, I know. And that's why we provided you...
I've read the decisions, and, you know, maybe the board is frustrated, but...
Well, after 30 years, I would imagine they are.
They, in any event... We're going to, as I say, we're going to try and craft something as a middle ground which protects you. And you'll look at it, and the board will look at it. Town meeting will look at it and determine whether they think it's reasonable. And, but you've got to, I mean, we've got the issues. We know what the issues are. And now we have to deal with them. And so I would sort of like to get on with it and close this hearing.
You know, I just hope, you know, I believe in the expertise of this board, and I really hope you take a look at the effects of allowing any of these commercial, large-scale, almost industrial-type businesses to run in the Residence A Zone. And one last point. I know you want to close this. There's no plan for the Health Department to do soil samples. There is, I think there are diesel fuel tanks on the property. I mean, we're talking six, five or six dump trucks. We're not talking pickup trucks. We're talking dump trucks, excavators, front-end loaders that run on, I don't know, diesel fuel, some kind of fuel.
You're thinking there may be some contamination.
I'm very concerned about contamination in my yard, and we're concerned about drainage. You know, we have that problem today. And I'm concerned with changing the landscaping and putting berms up and all this stuff. What is that going to do to the drainage? So I just hope you consider all of these issues and really consider the beauty of the neighborhood.
But as far as the drainage is concerned, there would have to be a drainage plan. And the drainage plan would have to be stamped by an engineer, and it would be reviewed. And so I suspect that, you know, drainage would be doubted.
One question. These are all plans. Before the permit was issued, do all of these plans have to come to fruition?
The concept plans at the moment, as we all know. So what would happen is, it would be a full special permit review, public hearing. We would have much more specific plans, showing, as Alex said, existing conditions, drainage, landscaping, all of the usual plans that we get, lighting plans, all of the usual plans that we get for site plan review. We can, under the town's bylaws, actually ask any applicant who comes before us to pay for a peer review of those. And depending on the complexity of plans, sometimes we request that, and sometimes we don't. So this isn't what would come before the board. It would be a much more specific set of plans with a narrative that comes along with it that explains exactly what happens. And then the board, if it approves such a plan, writes a decision that becomes an enforcement. Usually Alex writes those with input from the other members.
But they're plans nonetheless.
They become plans, yes.
And so can you start the business before everything happens?
No, they have to, they would have to develop the site in accordance with the approved plans, and then there would have to be a certificate of occupancy issued that indicating that all of the required elements have been so installed before they could begin to operate.
And Alex, you began to say that they were recorded, but you didn't get a chance to finish where they were.
The plans are recorded. The special permit is recorded. They're bound as a record.
But recorded where? I don't think they all know.
In the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds. And they're enforceable.
Okay. Well, thank you for listening to my concerns.
All right. Well, you do have concerns, and we hope to work to develop something that will be satisfactory to the boards and satisfactory to the neighborhood. And I would like to close the hearing, but I will recognize anyone else who feels that they have to speak. Yes?
I do have to speak. This isn't the game we're playing. These are people's lives. It's my 50 years of my life, and it's their lives. My two children's, it's their lives. So when you're considering these, please consider that.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. I will entertain a motion to close this hearing on the zoning articles.
I move that we close the hearing on the zoning articles. Wait, whoa, 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 whoa. On this zoning article or all zoning articles? We're just closing the hearing, right? We're allowed to discuss the other zoning articles among ourselves? Yes?
Yeah, well, we're going to, we can get to discussion of the other zoning articles. You want to still have further hearings on the other articles?
No, no, no. I'm just clarifying that we're closing all of the zoning articles.
We're closing the public hearing on the zoning articles.
Okay. Then in that case, I move to close the public hearing on all of the zoning articles that are in front of us.
Okay. Is that agreeable?
I would do so, with all exception, would be this article.
Well, we can move into discussion.
It seems to me, having everyone come back for a further hearing, like continuing the hearing, we just, we make everyone spend another evening before the planning board because the hearing will be continued. It seems to me that as a matter of convenience to the public, we should close this.
But they will never have a chance to speak again.
No. Well, I mean, if they have a chance to speak, it won't be part of the public hearing.
Well, they will have a chance for those who want to attend the Warren Committee. Nobody yet. It's still on the table.
You seconded it?
No, I made it. Nobody seconded it yet.
Someone seconded it, then we'll talk.
Do you want to second?
No.
I'd like to second.
May I ask a question?
We will still submit things to you after this.
Absolutely.
Okay.
You can discuss them.
Look, the public hearing is a requirement. It doesn't mean we have to stop listening to people because we're not going to stop listening. listening to people, and we're not going to stop talking to people.
Is that why they're stopping the testimony?
It simply is that by continuing it to another day and saying, "Why don't you all come back and spend another evening for a continued public hearing?"
Maybe we should discuss slightly what our next steps are so that we're all clear. So, we, the board, need to move towards discussing all of the articles, not just this one ourselves, make any changes that we want to make, get it to the warrant, get our recommendation to the warrant committee. Warrant committee gets to have their hearings, make their recommendation, and then they need to get that in the warrant. Maybe that we don't make the warrant this year, but hopefully we do, and get it to town meeting. So, at some point, in order for us to go into our discussions, we need to close the public hearing. So, the question--
We don't need to do it now.
We could wait, we could continue the hearing till the next meeting.
I don't, I think that we'll just continue the hearing till our next meeting.
Okay, and then we--
I'll second on Milton.
[laughing]
All right.
I withdraw my motion.
Any discussion, all in favor, all right. Okay, so we've continued the hearing until March--
13th. What time?
13th--
Remember, we have a couple of other discussions--
It's going to be at 8:00.
8:00? Okay.
Your mouth drops open, Bill.
Bill's going to be home and dread by then.
We have the, we have the report of the planning consultants at that point. We have the discussion on Randolph Avenue.
8:00.
The 40B off Randolph Avenue--
We have that 40B on Randolph Ave. We have the A&R Plan on Forest Street.
Yeah. So, if we start at 30 with the master plan consultants, that would probably take half an hour, 45 minutes, depending on how much questions you have. We have the 7:45?
We could do it at 7:30.
7:30, 7:30.
Thank you.
Continue to 7:30 on the 13th.
We've continued the hearing till 7:30 on the 13th.
Not that anybody heard.
Right, exactly.
The 13th, that's a great number.
But it's Thursday.
7:30, Bill.
Very good.
The viewing audience has seen at 7:30.
Okay. They're beautiful, aren't they? I was just thinking we should put them up in the planning office.
Would you create a piece and go later by the planning board?
There you go.
They're really, they're really--
We should get them signed.
Bill, would you just put those in your office until we decide what--
Alex, do we have other business for tonight?
Like what?
I think it's going to take us a while to get the crowd settled down.
Like what?
I don't know. I'm asking. Do we have other business, or shall we adjourn?
No other business. Happily, I'm parked that way, so--
Do we have a motion?
Do we have a motion?
To what?
I second that we adjourn.
All right, all in favor? All right, we're adjourned.